Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Watkin County Council meeting for January 16th, 2018. We will go and please call the roll.
Barbara Brenner.
Here.
Red Brown.
Here.
Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird.
Here.
Todd Donovan.
Here.
Sut Paul Sidoo.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Please rise and join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple announcements before we get rolling, and that is if you have your cellphone with you, please silence it so it will not ring during the meeting. We'd appreciate that. We had a special committee of the whole meeting at 6:00 PM. The agenda for that was our annual reorganization of the council. And I will just announce one thing, and then I will turn it over to the new chair. And that is council member Red Brown was elected to serve as the council chair for 2018. So I will, this will be a peaceful transfer of power, and I will give him the gavel.
Thank you, and if I could ask you to please turn off your cellphones. And if you're handing out any paperwork to council members, please also give one copy to the council clerk sitting down here. The first order of business is statement by applicants nominated to fill the at-large B-position on the county council. We have seven applicants, which was Timothy Ballou, the two, Patricia Dunn, Seth Fleetwood, Carol Frazee, Cliff Langley, Natalie McLendon, and Alicia Rule, Pete Cremmon, who was nominated but declined his nomination. So first up would be Mr. Ballou.
Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'd also like to thank the members of the audience who are here this evening to witness, and also the other 29 applicants who submitted their applications to each of you for consideration. I'd like to acknowledge the other applicants who, I guess, moved on to this round, who are here this evening. Definitely, I think you have a great problem in front of you of selecting from so many qualified applicants to serve our community, and I'm humbled to be here this evening as one of those people. I want to commit to each and every one of you, but more importantly to the membership, or the members of Watkin County. My pledge to do what I can to help the county council keep this county what it is, and that's the greatest place to live and raise a family and work. I truly believe that. We have harvesters, we have a diverse economy, and we have an environment that we have the responsibility, not just to take care of for now, but to pass on to our families, to make sure that our families get to experience the things that our grandparents did. I truly believe that. And I also bring to you my experience in governance that is, as you may know, I served the last five years as tribal chairman for the Lemmy Nation. And I think the biggest thing that I learned and took away from my experience is, in public office, it's less about the personal agendas that someone brings to the table, but the willingness to take on the issues of the day that are in front of us and are at the table when you arrive. And I learned that very quick, and I think that it's very important for public servants to take that to heart. And I see in front of the county council many issues. I see that the voters of this county have spoken twice on the issue of a jail. And I think that there's a definite need for public safety, as well as improvements of the facility at the jail. And I would urge you to take that on, and also take on the comments from the new committee that's being formed to get public input on how to proceed with that. The other thing that regardless of if I was appointed to the vacancy or not, the one thing that I ask you as a member of this county is to take on the issue of water. And specifically certainty for the water users of all of the people in the county and all the people who rely on the Nookzak River Basin. I think that the issue brought to the county from the Hearst decision is just one part of a larger community, a need for a solution for certainty for everybody in the future. I think that we'll take advocacy from the county and the elected officials to work with the folks in Olympia, but not depend on Olympia to make a determination that would at best solve just a smaller problem and at worst kick the can down the road.
Thirty seconds, please.
I think that there's definitely the possibility within our county to bring leadership to provide a longstanding solution for generations to come. And I'd be happy to be a part of that. And again, regardless if appointed or not, I strongly urge the council to take a leadership role in finding solutions to water certainty for all of the water users. That's for the agricultural community, for homeowners, for industry, as well as our fishing economy here in the county.
Time.
But again, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for your commitment to the community. Haiska.
Just before you leave, what's the wishes of the council? Do you want to do a Q and A after each person?
What?
Would you like to do a Q and A after each presentation?
That makes sense, because that way we don't invite everyone back up. You just take your questions.
Do we have consensus on that? Is it same thing you'd like?
That's fine.
Okay. So any questions for Mr. Ballou?
Okay, last question. Mr. Ballou, in your application that you filled out, well, more specifically in the questionnaire that you sent for, that Carl had put together, in that questionnaire you stated that you had no interest in rerunning and that you would not rerun for this position or any other position. Is that still true?
Yeah, at the time that I submitted the application, and now I do not intend to file for the at-large position.
So the at-large position or any position?
I do not intend to file for the county council seat this year. And I believe that the at-large is up next year also because of the way of the timing. I don't intend to file.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Ballou, when we spoke, one of the questions that had come up was the issue of what would you do in the event that there was a conflict of interest between a decision representing the council and representing the Lemmy Nation? What would your intentions be?
Well, if a member of the county council, I would see my responsibility to the entire county, and if there was a potential conflict, if there was a conflict of interest where I had personal gain, regardless if it was dealing with the Lemmy Nation or something else, which I don't see coming up in the next 10 months, I would recuse myself from that potential vote, or the hypothetical vote.
Thank you. Mr. Bird?
Could you give me an example of something that you think would be a conflict of interest in which you would recuse yourself, related to the tribe? Sorry?
In which I would not recuse myself?
In which you would, in which you would see you recusing yourself?
I, it's, it's a hypothetical question. I don't see a decision that the county would make that would directly benefit a particular individual of the Lemmy tribe unless it was, it would really depend on the situation. And I think that at the time, if an issue came up, if I saw that was a direct benefit to myself, I would recuse myself, just as we would ask any member of the council to do so.
Yeah. So just for clarity, I think, and maybe this is my misunderstanding of conflict of interest, so excuse me if that's the case, but I think what I hear you saying is that a conflict of interest would arise if it has to do with an individual or yourself or the tribe. Would there be a case in which there would be a conflict in which the tribe itself would benefit from something that the county is negotiating with them, that you would see yourself recusing yourself from? Does that make sense?
The, I don't, it would really depend on, I guess, what, I don't see, the biggest thing that I've seen happen between the county and the tribe over the last decade is something like the negotiation of the lease of the ferry property. You know, I live close to the ferry property, I don't own the ferry property. It'd be, I think, no different than a representative of a district voting on a community project or improvement or transportation issue. And if it didn't directly benefit the council member, I would expect the elected official to weigh in with what he or she thought was the best for the county and vote. But if they directly benefit from the issue at hand, we would all expect the elected officials step back and recuse themselves from the vote.
Tim, I don't mean to beat a dead cow, excuse the metaphor, but the, I guess for me, what I'm trying to figure out is, a conflict of interest in my book arises when I might receive personal gain, or a family member of mine might receive personal gain, and/or my businesses might receive personal gain. Or, and I've heard you recuse yourself when properties are in line with that. And I just know that there's a number of issues, whether it's Cherry Point, whether it's the Fourth Pier, whether it's water in Hearst, or any number of additional issues that we will be working with the tribe on those moving forward, and that the tribe will have some conflict, or some communications and some participation there. And in your specific situation, I think it's unique because you've served as the chairman of the tribe for the last five years. And in our conversation, when we had met over coffee, you had made it sound like your intention was to go back and to run for reelection with the tribe and to serve potentially again as the chair of the tribe. And so my concern is being a past chair and probably a future chair, and possibly only a council member for 10 months, that there could be votes that would come up in which your interest would be to do what's best for the tribe and not the county in general. Does that make sense? Did I state that clearly? It was kind of long, sorry.
Mr. Brenner.
So I'm sorry, you answered first, before, like, I guess I wanted...
As I mentioned earlier, my commitment to you and to the members of the county is to help the county move forward in this next 10 months with whatever the issues that come to the table, and do right by all of the people of Watkin County.
Mr. Donovan? Hey, so I'm having trouble following the line of questioning. We have a member of the county council right now who was a former member of another government as a representative on their council, the city of Bellingham. We are always having contract negotiations and conflicts with the city of Bellingham. Should that council member then recuse himself, whether he's personally benefiting or not, but potentially benefiting the city of Bellingham, we have council members who are potentially, I'm not going to, run for other offices. I just, in terms of standard definitions of conflict of interest, I don't see where that, I understand what you're saying, if there was a personal business interest, or if you own property somewhere, which is usually when we see being recused, but being a representative of another government, or potentially moving on to serve on another government, could move a lot of people from being able to vote on stuff off this council.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I'm just trying to gain kind of maybe some thought process into how Mr. Ballou will make that decision of what's a conflict of interest and what's not, and see kind of how he's going to make that judgment, what their criteria would be. But those are the essence of my questions. My only other question would be, and Mr. Brown has made it, he's made the suggestion to me numerous times, both in campaigning and now that I've been elected to the seat, that this first year of office is going to be something in which it's 80, 90 hours a week, if not more, and that next year will be very significantly the same. And so I know that you also own a business, and that you are out, and that that's your livelihood. Are you going to be able to manage working and fulfilling this job for 80, 90 hours as you learn it while sustaining your livelihood and running your business?
If, I would not have submitted my application if I did not intend to take this seriously.
And as a point of clarification, I said I spent 80 hours a week in the first six months, 60 hours a week in the second six months, and then 40 hours a week in the second year.
Yeah.
But it is, there's a steep learning curve. And I think the learning curve is, it's a function of what you want to commit to the job, it's also what you want to learn from the job.
I think he was just trying to get an answer from him, not you.
No, no, I know, but I was just clarifying. He quoted me, and I just wanted to clarify what his quotation. Any other questions for Mr. Ballou, or did you want to make any further comment?
No further comment, if there's no other questions?
Thank you for applying.
Thank you all.
Am I supposed to applaud him?
I will ask that there's no applause or complaint about any individual. We'd like to make this an environment where people can speak in an even and fair manner. Next item up is Patricia Dunn, or next person up, sorry, is Patricia Dunn.
Good evening. I'm not your typical political candidate. I will bring unusual but practical experience to the council. I've always come back to Watkin County. I was born in Bellingham, and even though I grew up in Alaska, I was back here most summers. Eventually, I attended Western as a starving student. Ultimately, drawn back by my roots going back four generations, I built my home on Lemmy Island. I have 20 years of government experience, starting as an auditor. Later, at Alaska Railroad, I worked on the transition from federal to state ownership. I delved into the kaleidoscope of federal transportation regulations, and later worked with the governor and state commissioners on regulatory and fiscal issues. When I moved permanently to Watkin County, I joined WTA as a finance director, where I worked with many of our local communities and organizations. I was appointed to the ferry task force, where I made several recommendations to reduce costs and improve service. Later, the county executive and the mayor of Bellingham, unbeknownst to me, appointed me to the EMS Oversight Committee. In both appointments, I drove a data-driven, evidence-based approach to decision-making. This depth and breadth of experience is needed for the at-large council vacancy. You'll be looking at the excitement of the new budget cycle soon. I know this process inside and out. I'm also familiar with the policy deliberations, the responsibilities, the restrictions, the conflicts, and the very long meetings in government. I would hit the ground running. Normally, you would just consider my relevant experience and credentials. But my superpower is listening and finding solutions through collaboration and consensus. I'm energized by problem-solving. I aim for win-win solutions. I'm not afraid of a challenge. The first time I ever flew, I crashed my ultralight. Soon after, I got back in the swing set seat, my knees were shaking, and I got up and I flew again, and that time it was perfect. Another example is when I jumped into the EMS Oversight Board with no clue what ALS or BLS even stood for. But I eventually chaired the ALS/BLS Committee and recommended solutions for the EMS initiative in 2016. The best decisions are made when diverse views participate in solutions. My unique background and experience provides this diversity of perspective that will contribute to your success. I aim to work hand-in-hand with you to provide county citizens with the best policy, services, and infrastructure possible.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you for your consideration.
Are there any questions for Ms. Dunn? That's a good, fair question, a conflict of interest question.
Good question. I have had...
Sorry, actually, I'm sorry, we're going to keep it out of order, if I may. I'm going out of order, the questions start with council members. Is there any questions from council members?
Do you have any perceived conflicts of interest?
No. I have been retired from WTA for three years, occasionally keep in touch with people. I also have had considerable professional training and ethics through the Washington State Transit Insurance Pool, which I could have had a conflict with WTA and the pool. As a CPA, I have to have ethics training every two or three years. And I've undergone other professional ethics, so I am well aware of the situations where you do need to recuse yourself.
Any further questions for Ms. Dunn?
I'm curious, this is a budget year, and you seem to have extensive background in finance. Have you looked over our budget by chance?
I have.
Okay.
Yes. I've looked over it for the ferry task force, and I know this sounds weird, but I like looking at those just for fun. Kind of cool. Finance is where the rubber hits the road. That's where things happen.
Would you rerun for this position?
No.
Or any position on the council?
No, I have no interest in that. I'm not, I would not rule it out 100%, but I would rule it out 99%. I can't see where I would want to pick this up on a full-time basis.
So Patricia, let me ask you, with that in mind, why would you be more qualified for this position than, say, a past council member such as Seth Fleetwood?
I may not be. But what I bring to the table is, I know the nuts and bolts of government, I've sat through many, many of these meetings, these kind of meetings. I know a number of the organizations, the people in the organizations, the people in the communities in the council. I think everyone here knows that WT's Board of Directors was always elected. So I can hit the ground running with that. I keep on current issues. Do I know them in depth? Not necessarily at this point in time, but I'm a quick study, and I know where to look for information.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Dunn? Thank you for your application. Next up is Mr. Fleetwood.
Greetings. I too want to thank you for selecting me as a finalist for consideration for this appointment. It's an honor to be amongst a group of exceptional and qualified candidates, any one of whom I'm confident is going to bring their own unique perspective and experience to bear on issues of importance coming before the council next year. As you know, I threw my name in the hat somewhat late in the process. I thought that I could serve as a placeholder if there was need for that, just to serve throughout the rest of this year until the special election in November. I love public interest work. All of my greatest passions in life are found in the public sphere. And of course, there are so many issues of importance that are going to be coming before the council this year. It's going to be an exciting time for all of you. Social justice issues, issues relating to home affordability, the houseless crisis, what to do in regards to the jail, general growth issues, how do we ensure that we grow well as our populations increase, water issue, both quality and quantity, how to respond to the Hearst decision, how to continue the effort of building a protection program for Lake Watkin, economic development issues, climate impact preparation, there's just a whole range. And that's just to mention a few. For those in the audience who don't know me, I had the honor of serving on the county council in the last decade with you. You're the only one that was there back then, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So it was natural for someone like me with my interests to consider and ponder this position, and I feel that I would bring some value added in that respect. But I also recognize that there are some good and powerful currents that are flowing through our community right now, that I trust are here to stay, that relate to inclusivity and empowerment of groups and of people that have historically been underrepresented on our councils. So tonight, of course, presents to you, perhaps commends to you, an important opportunity in that respect, something that I very much understand and support.
Thirty seconds, please.
So finally, just as a general observation, I would just say, be bold, be visionary, and help us make the community that we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fleetwood. Any questions for Mr. Fleetwood?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carol Frazee.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Carol Frazee. I'm the president and founder of Fit School Incorporated, and I grew up on a farm in rural Pennsylvania, on a 58-acre farm in Mifflenville, Pennsylvania. I am the granddaughter of coal miners. I'm a former teacher. I have two children, and they go to Seahom High School. And I am the wife of an instructor at Watkin Community College. And, you know, we moved here 18 years ago because we wanted to start a family, and this is the perfect place, and we think it's one of the best decisions we've ever made in our lives, and we love it here. And, you know, our backgrounds and our experiences, they really, you know, make our values and our belief systems. And, you know, growing up on a farm, I know what it's like to have restrictions and regulations, and how that impacts a farm family and the stresses it does to us. And, you know, as a mother, though, I want clean air, and I want clean water for my children and my grandchildren, and everyone else's grandchildren, you know? And we need to, you know, when we make decisions, looking at the long-term effects. And, you know, that takes compromise, it takes finding common ground, and sometimes that's uncomfortable. And something Mr. Bird brought up last week, you brought up, you know, we have decisions to make, we have important decisions to make, we have a budget to pass. And that's really important, and we need someone, we need someone who can just hit the ground running and just go for it. And that's important. And that's the way, you know, that's a comfortable way of doing it, that's the way we've always done it, and it would be seamless if we did it that way. And I would like to recommend, you know, a different way to approach this. You know, each line on that budget and each decision we make, it affects different people, different groups, in different ways. And the more diverse people we can bring into that situation, into that conversation, the more it's going to represent the values of the people of Watkin County. You know, so maybe we bring in someone who has a little less political influence in the county, maybe that be another woman, maybe it be a mother, maybe it be someone from the Lemmy Nation.
Thirty seconds, please.
It won't be as seamless, and it won't be as comfortable. So I'd like to ask the... So I'd like to ask the council, you know, are you willing to give a bigger voice to those in the county who are unrepresented? And are you willing to be a little uncomfortable? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Frazee? Thank you very much.
Um, I always wanted to know, um, would you like to know how, you know, I own a business also, and, and children, and how I would, um, how I'm going to do that 90 hours per week also?
Absolutely.
I will do the job, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frazee. Next up is Mr. Cliff Langley.
Good evening. I am Cliff Langley, and I wanna thank Barbara for her nomination. I have stood before you numerous times before. You know who I am. If you elect me to fill the vacant position on the council, I don't think there'll be any surprises. You know that property rights and the rights of individuals are important to me. I'm aware of some of the issues that our council is facing this coming year. The exempt well restrictions have created many, a crisis for many of our families. For some, it has placed the hopes and the dreams of, of building a home in jeopardy. That needs to be addressed. Land use restrictions and overregulation that is pressuring our local farms will have financial implications that could do damage to a vital part of our local economy. The jail crisis continues. Something must be done. And we have BP and the industrial center at Cherry Point. How can we solve these problems? I spent some time this last week with Councilmember Sat Paul Sedu, and we talked about these issues. I told Sat Paul that as a deputy sheriff, I couldn't go into a situation with a preconceived idea. I had to listen to the people that were involved. I had to look for evidence. I had to look and see if there were other people that had personal knowledge of the incident so that I could make a determination of what action I should take after I had discovered, or at least made a diligent effort to find out what the truth was. I plan to operate the same way on the county council. I believe that we can discuss alternatives and solutions with reasonable, in a reasonable manner, and find places of agreement that will help the residents of Watcom County. Our constitution guarantees that we have a representative form of government. As it currently sits, there is a large group of people that are not being represented by this council. Your appointment of me will go a long way to bring balance and thereby giving voice to those that are underrepresented.
Thirty seconds, please.
I am retired, and I have the time to dedicate myself to the serious issues that we'll be facing. If I am appointed, I will not campaign in 2018 because I believe that would be a distraction from my dedication to the work on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Any questions from Mr. Langley? Mr. Sedu?
Cliff, thank you for meeting with you. I think we had a great conversation. I just wanna ask you a question about the conflict. Now, you have been sheriff's deputy for 20-plus years.
Yes.
And, uh, and you have been big supporter of new jail?
Yes.
And few other things. Now, it is possible that you may want to run for sheriff in the next year, or two years, or five years?
I had never considered that.
That's fine. My question to you is, how do you see this as a conflict of interest? Would you recuse yourself on all the jail issues, or issues of deputies, or issues of sheriff?
Well, I don't intend to run for sheriff, and I think that the issue of the jail, we had a good discussion about that. And I think that I'm open-minded. I don't think that that would be a, a conflict of interest for me.
Thank you.
Yes.
It's an interesting line of, sorry, anybody else from Mr. Langley? Interesting line of questioning, Mr. Sedu. One of the roles of the council is to vote on the employment labor contracts with the sheriff deputies.
Right.
Those contracts would involve us negotiating with people, many of whom would be your personal friends, given your career.
Right.
So what would your decision be on that?
I, I would probably look at recusing myself in that situation.
Further questions? Ms. Brenner?
I just wanna say a clarification. There are plenty of people out there I'm personal friends with, too, but that has nothing to do with my decisions. And I don't understand why you would ask somebody about personal friendships if they don't affect him financially or any other way. I mean, it's just a strange question to ask. There's gotta be people out there that are your personal friends.
And, and I have actually recused myself.
No, you always recuse yourself because you have property involved.
I've recused... Ms. Brenner, I can explain later, but I've recused votes where I have known, been personal friends with people.
Well, I've always asked you when you do that, and you've never said that, so...
Any further questions from Mr. Langley? Thank you very much. Next up is Ms. Natalie McLendon.
Thank you all for your confidence in me by nominating me. I'm Natalie McLendon. I'm not gonna hide the fact that I got my start in local politics in the Democratic Party. But I wanna make it clear that that's not where I remain in my activities in the, in the county, in the, in the community these days. I'm an independent thinker, and I actively seek connections outside of my bubble. We all have our bubbles. But, you know, in order to serve a diverse, the diverse interests of constituents, I would say that you need to mix equal parts compassion and empathy with hard-headed reality and pragmatism. That's what I do. And the only way to do that is by knowing real people and listening to them. As a sitting council member, I intend to make a deliberate, more deliberate approach than I already have in connecting with people in all walks of life. Over the years, I've learned that leadership involves creating and supporting a framework for people to make decisions. It's not just, what is your opinion and what, how are you gonna vote? You have to, in democracy, we have better and longer-lasting outcomes when an educated public participates in the process. And we have to have that process in the, in the council. Unfortunately, there seems to be increased interest in misinforming the public as a strategy for political success. The only defense against this is a strong offense, by stepping up public information efforts, bringing more people into the process, making sure they understand what's coming toward the council before the final hearing. I've seen this over and over on the Planning Commission, where I've served for the last four years. We, we work on an issue and discuss it openly, but nobody's there to listen. And then we have a public hearing, and suddenly people get the notice, because that's what public hearings are, and they show up, and we've really already hashed it all out. It doesn't create good decisions that way. As far as what I would do on the council?
Thirty seconds, please.
Besides that, I'm very interested in dealing with the water issues, crafting lasting solutions on sharing water that's owned by the people of the county for the benefit of people, farms, and fish. And I've, this has been an issue, a lifelong interest of mine. We also need to bring together both the opponents and proponents of the recent rejected jail proposal and actively and robustly come to some lasting decisions.
Dime?
I would be honored to have your vote for the appointment of the county council.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. McLendon?
I'm curious. In your application, well, in the survey, you said you haven't made up your mind on whether you'll run?
Uh, the question was about running for the at-large position, and I haven't made up my mind. I am interested, I am considering running for the 5th District in a year, which would be next year. The elec, the, the campaign would be next year.
Okay, thank you for that. In my mind, you're one of three people that is in this finalist pool that has direct experience working on committees, either with the council or has served as a past council member. Do you think that gives you an advantage over the other applicants as far as an understanding and being able to pick up the job and do it more quickly and efficiently?
I do think that a bulk of what the council does has to do with planning and development issues. And I recall my first year on the Planning Commission. And it was like, okay, what's this? What's that? And frankly, I, you know, on those issues, for sure, I would, I would think a 10-month appointment would be, you'd barely get your feet under you on a lot of those issues. Unless it's something that you're just weirdly interested in and have picked it up along the way.
Good, thank you.
Any further questions from Ms. McLendon? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next up and the last applicant is Alicia Rule.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for the nomination. I love Watcom County and consider it to be a privilege to live here daily. I earned my degrees, my political experience, and my professional legs elsewhere, but I'm thrilled to be back home to serve in my community. I moved back three years ago because I wanted my three children to enjoy the incredible quality of life I enjoyed as a child. I was born and raised in Watcom County and graduated from Meridian High School. My dad was a truck driver that hauled hay from Eastern Washington to the local dairies. My grandparents had a dairy farm in Sioux, Mass. I watched my community change in the 80s as farmers struggled to decide if they would buy out or hang on, and then turned around to study it and its effects at my, in my University of Washington classrooms. I learned to salmon fish with my dad on the banks of the Nook'sack River, never imagining those salmon returned year after year to be threatened. And I watched my classmates move on to places like MIT and Microsoft, unable to return to Watcom County because the jobs just aren't here. These issues are too big and too complex to bicker amongst ourselves as if there were one easy solution. We need community leaders like me to bring us together, use the best available science, and open mind, and work hard for answers that will protect our water quality and farmlands, ecosystems, and jobs. As we navigate the complex challenges we are facing, it's easy to see that we are long overdue in our county to bring the county and local tribal leadership together to shape our collective future. And I have the proven ability to do that successfully. I collaborated with multiple tribes in the Southern California counties to write and implement policy for the Department of Health and Human Services to protect the legal rights and the culture of the tribal children and the families. As a social worker, I have worked hands-on with homelessness, housing, community health, addiction, and rehabilitation after incarceration. Locally, we are in desperate need for a better, better mental health, substance abuse treatment, and an incarceration reduction plan. I have the direct experience to make the best decisions on a path forward on the implementation of programs that are fiscally responsible and effective. It's time to look in unexpected places for our next leaders. It's time to see that local government belongs to all of us, and our leaders should reflect that. There is wisdom in embracing a variety of perspectives to mirror our real community.
Thirty seconds, please.
With backgrounds in both rural Watcom County and life experience in urban social work, I'm ready and willing to meet these challenges head-on, together with all of our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Rule? Mr. Sedu?
I really don't have a question, but I wanna make a statement. I, I, some people did ask me that I nominated you. I just wanted to make that clarification that I know Alicia and her family for more than 20 years. I knew her dad, mom, and dad. We used to go to soccer games and, and basketball ball games, and I still continue to have a relationship with her family, and we were practically neighbors. And I'm so happy, glad, that you came back to Watcom County and, and want to raise your kids here. I remember when I came to this county 30 years ago, I came here only for a couple of years, and I never left because I found that this is the best place to raise kids. And I can, I, I, I already know that you know that. And, uh, and I appreciate your resolve and, and winning that election and aspiring to apply for the county council. You're a young person, you will have a lot of opportunity, and, uh, and I wish you best.
Thank you so much.
Any further questions? Mr. Bird?
Were you just elected to Blaine City Council?
Yes.
Have you taken office there?
I have.
So would you leave that seat to accept this one, or would you do them both?
I don't actually...
You can't, if you're in the council, it can't be another government vote.
I have not seen that in either area unless I've missed it. In, in the case, then, that, that I did need to choose legally, I would choose the county seat.
I'm just curious, a personal, a personal question. The voters just voted you in for that seat. Wouldn't that, hey, I guess my, my problem with that would be, would you complete this seat? Or would, if something else came along, would you leave to take that?
It's understandable. Truthfully, I have not seen anywhere where there was a conflict from what I could research myself and had others look at. So it's a surprise to me.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, council, we haven't really reached an agreement as to how we're gonna conduct this process. We have, I'll just give you these two sheets to start with, Mr. Bird. Uh, these are the tally sheets. The suggestion has been that we nominate one or two people on this sheet and then give it to the county clerk, who would then announce the results, and then we do a roll call vote after that. That's the most current version, I believe, of the proposal. Is that correct? Does that sound correct?
I think that was the only version that I received.
So, um, if someone makes, wants to make a motion that we do that, then we...
I move the motion?
There's a motion on the floor, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Mr. Cannon is seconded, Mr. Sedu is...
You wanna read this? Please say the motion again.
Okay. Repeat the motion is that each of us would be given one of these sheets and would nominate one or two people.
Not this sheet?
No, this is for our own purposes, for keeping tally.
This is just to keep tally?
And then we'd hand these to the clerk, who would then announce the results of that and then call the roll call vote for the final official vote. So the, the concern was that if we do it in the normal roll call vote, by the time you get to the last person, the results are probably known. And so this was a more, um, a more equitable way of doing it, so... Ms. Brenner?
I'm not sure what you mean is, we won't know till she gets it all tallied, so...
Correct. And then she would announce what the tally was.
Yeah, when, when we're all done, so why would they...
When we've handled, handed this in. The normal way we would do it is a roll call vote, where she would, she would ask each council member to say, "Do you vote for Fred, or do you vote for Mary?" Right? And by the time you got, got down through the council, you may well have enough votes for Fred or Mary.
I, I thought that what we had talked about originally was, we just put in the name of the person, a person, not more than one person. And if that doesn't work, then we could do it the other way, but I would...
And that's your prerogative, prerogative to suggest that we just do one person, too, if you wish?
Yeah.
Is it, do you wanna make this an amendment?
Well, that wouldn't have been, to me, that's what we had already agreed on, I thought.
The sheets, the sheets have been written for two.
Oh.
Is that correct? Yeah. So, again, I wasn't the originator of the suggestion, so I'm not sure of the history of it. So do you wish to make a motion that we, amendment that we do just one?
I don't...
You don't have to put two, anyway? No? Any further discussion on this? So all in favor of this procedure, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm just gonna abstain, I don't...
Okay. So each of these have our name on it, that one's for you. Those are yours, too.
Mr. Brenner, I assume we will have a conversation about the candidates before we vote?
Yeah, if you wish, sure. If you pass those two, Ms. Brenner. So what's the wishes of the council? You, you wanna have a conversation, is that...
I think we should have a conversation on the applicants.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, please proceed.
Okay. I'll lead off on a couple of points that I would like to make. One is, I'm gonna go back to the conflict of interest point. If I, as the owner of... If I, as the owner of my company, decided to leave my company for a year, run for office, and during that time do things in benefit of my company, knowing that I would then take the position as CEO of my company in a year after the fact, then there would be problems in which I would have to come up with a criteria in which I would recuse myself from those solutions, or from those issues, so that I could do what was in the best interest of the community. The reason that I asked Mr. Baloo more questions than probably anybody else is because it's fairly obvious that Mr. Baloo is probably the next council member here that has been decided by the nomination criteria and I, and I think the lack of questions for candidates from other council members. And so I'm very curious in his answers, more so than anyone else's, because quite frankly, I think that he's the one that's going to be appointed tonight and that no one else really has a shot. Now, with that said, I do believe that it's in our best interest as council leaders to do what's in the best interest of our community first. And when I say that, our community is not a political party. Our community is not our own votes and what's going to win us a vote. Our community is, the community as a whole and the people that have voted us in. And to do what's in the best interest of those people isn't to make the choice to put someone into the seat that doesn't have any experience. It's to put someone into this seat that can do the best job possible while they hold it for a very, very short period of time. And I made this statement last time. Every single one of the applicants who have applied has the opportunity now to file tonight. You could do it right on your phone with a PDC and register to run for office. You have the ability to go in front of the public and do what every single one of the members of the council here has and run for office and tell them why you would be the best candidate. What we can rely on as council members is knowing what the voters have already decided and who has experience to do the job the best. And quite frankly, the people who have experience to do the job the best are people who have sat on committees or have sat here in these seats and have already been appointed by council members. And so I would ask, why should we have any right to put anyone else in this position that doesn't have that experience? How is that in the best interest of the community and moving forward?
Further discussion?
Ah, I just wanted to say that Councilmember Bird just said, if I heard you correctly, you asked many questions to Mr. Baloo and other people didn't. I don't know what you meant by that. People ask questions to things they don't know. It doesn't mean everybody has to ask questions. You ask questions, you had your information gap. If the other person does not have an information gap, they don't have to ask the questions. So, uh, and, and, and I think it's rightly the thing that you wanted to know certain things and in, in, in a public forum on the record. I think that's a great thing. But insinuating, and maybe I'm taking it wrongly, I don't know, but the insinuation is that other people are not asking questions. That's, that, that was my point.
I can put this in a different way? Mr. Donovan? That's kind of insulting.
Yes. Oh, you, you, that's fine, and you don't have to be nice. I mean, I, I think what it comes down to for me is doing what's in the best interest of the community. And to this point, I haven't heard anyone say why we should put someone in this position that has zero experience and how that's doing better for the community than putting someone that has direct experience.
You just disqualified yourself for office by that criteria.
No, but I ran for office.
You're not supposed to clap, you guys.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, I, the point is valid. We don't allow applause or criticism in the council meetings from the public during discussion. Ms. Brenner?
Well, I'm gonna respectfully disagree a little bit. Knowing that somebody's got experience, that may be a problem. Because, you know, they got biases, they got all kinds of stuff. In many respects, I'd rather have somebody with a clean slate than somebody who I know is maybe not going to represent the public interest that well.
Ms. Sedoo?
I just want to say the same thing. When I got appointed to this council, I had no political experience, zero. But I learned the job, put my time in, and, and I'm still learning every day. I just want to read one statement I wrote just in the break, last few minutes ago. Franklin Roosevelt, on his first inauguration, said this. "So first of all, let me assert my firm belief that the only thing we have to fear is the fear itself. Nameless, unreasoning, unjustified terror, which paralyzes needed efforts to convert retreat into advances." I think there have been so many comments on social media and everything. I mean, this, this is the world we live in. There is a discussion about fear, you know, if, if there's a person from Lummi Nation serving on the council, somehow it is assumed as a conflict. Like, it is given as a conflict. I don't buy that argument. We are all citizens of this country, and we all want to serve. And I'm from a minority. I feel very proud that public gave me a chance to, to serve my community in this capacity. But this is not the only capacity one can serve. I have been in this community for 30 years. I'm not just boasting about me, but I, these, these are the facts. We must always realize these things. And, and I have lived in this community for 30 years. Out of that, more than 20 years, I have served on 12 or 14 different boards. I still serve on other different boards. Serving community, everybody getting an opportunity and experience and bridging the gaps. Actually, that's an opportunity, to me, that we should not miss. Thank you.
I just want to clarify this point, too, on conflict of interest. My suggestion, so everyone in the room here is clear, is not that any member of the Lummi Indian tribe would have a conflict of interest. My suggestion is that there is a possible conflict of interest for the past essential CEO of the tribe who holds the position and has an intent to rerun for the position. And I'm not saying that there is. My only questioning there was, how would you decide whether or not there would be so that you can make the decision to recuse yourself in that situation? And that's what I was trying to get at.
Ms. Brenner?
I just want to say I'm really glad we had an opportunity to personally hear from everybody. I mean, I read all this stuff, and it's, to me, it's just stuff. But when people get up here and speak, it's a whole different dimension. And I was extremely impressed by quite a few people who spoke, so. And I didn't expect to be, so, yeah. It's kind of amazing.
So I was the one who asked the question of Mr. Baloo, the first applicant, of whether there's a conflict of interest. And I'll tell you, the background to that is that that was the reason, the most frequent reason given to me by people who wrote in opposition of Mr. Baloo's candidacy. And I personally don't believe Mr. Baloo would have a conflict of interest because I can't believe that he would have served as council chair for five years if he didn't know how to navigate that very issue with his own community. Because any group that you represent, you have, where you have multiple constituents, you have the risk of conflict of interest. And you either learn how to navigate that or you don't. So I just wanted to point out that my question was not in any way meant to bring Mr. Baloo under a particular different light. It was just the fact that that was a question that had been asked. I should also point out that, um, a lot of people have also written, people have written, raising that question, and people have written also saying they didn't, they had no doubt that there would not be an issue, so. Mr. Donovan?
I just, I guess I want to echo what Councilmember Brenner said. It's, it's really impressive hearing everybody speak to us and share their enthusiasm for sitting up here, which somehow we don't show enough enthusiasm for. But I, and I, I don't want to get off on a bad start here, but that is... I know I'm going to have fun working with them. And, but I actually, I mean, I, I came here not having my mind made up. And I think one of my more important criteria is knowing that somebody we appoint won't be running for the seat again in, in 2018. In part because of the, you'd have to start running in May, or if not earlier. And also just because then there'd be the appearance that we're somehow, you know, helping somebody along. So that, that's for me one of the more difficult things to navigate with all this.
Any further questions, or are we ready for a vote?
Yep.
That's yes on the vote?
Yep.
All right, so based on the procedure we voted on before, each of you would put down the name of the person you wish to do. And then I guess Madam Clerk will come and collect them from us.
Point of clarification? Did you say one person?
No, two.
Two?
It says two.
One or two.
You're one or two?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Bird, Seth Fleetwood, Patricia Dunn. Councilmember Brown, Timothy Baloo. Councilmember Donovan, Seth Fleetwood, Tim Baloo. Councilmember Brenner, Cliff Langley, Patricia Dunn. Councilmember Buchanan, Tim Baloo, Seth Fleetwood. Councilmember Sedoo, Tim Baloo, Natalie McLendon.
Could you read the tallies again for each of us?
Do you want me to reread the names? I'm sorry.
Just the tallies, I think is probably crucial.
Uh, Tim Baloo, four votes. Patricia Dunn, two votes. Seth Fleetwood, three votes. Cliff Langley, one vote. Natalie McLendon, one vote.
And you wish to take the roll call, make it official. We need four, we need four to reach a decision. It appears we've reached a decision, so we'll take a roll call vote.
Well, Tim Blue got four votes, what do you mean?
Hmm? We only need four votes for the, for the motion to pass. It's not a motion, we have four, it appears we have four votes, which is adequate to elect or appoint the next council member. But now we have to go through the official roll call to make it official, which the person, the person may...
We do?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
That's the charter.
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. So now, how do, go through a roll call of who?
Top two.
Top two?
Top two or top one now?
Or top one.
I would suggest we just go for the roll for, roll call for the top one, the top one.
But we already have the top one.
We have to do it, by charter, we have to do it as a roll call vote. Which is affirming the, the vote you've just received.
Correct.
Yeah.
Barry Buchanan?
Tim Baloo.
Tyler Bird?
I'm sorry, are we saying the name or yes or no?
No, you name.
The, the, it's now a roll call vote for who you wish.
But you don't have a choice, so why is it a roll call? It doesn't make sense.
I think if you made a motion to appoint Tim Baloo to the position...
That should be the motion.
And then we would do a roll call vote on that.
So someone, who wants to make a motion?
I make the motion that Tim Baloo should be next county council member.
And I second.
Ms. Sedoo makes the motion, Mr. Buchanan seconds.
Thank you. Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Sat Paul Sedoo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Baloo is now...
Congratulations.
So, Mr. Baloo, welcome to the council. The clerk has a packet of information for you and would like to spend some time with you. Is that what you want me to?
We can either do that now or we can wait till the end of the meeting.
So...
Yeah, let's do it at the end of the meeting, so he can sit through the rest of our painful comments.
All right. Next item up.
Doesn't make sense.
Actually, I, I would, just before, I'm just going to jump out a sequence here for a little bit. We've, we've, I want to thank everybody who's applied for this position. It is, was a stunningly large and well-qualified group of applicants. I think that would be the consensus with the rest of the council. Is that true? And we have many boards and commissions to, that need good talent on. And I'd really encourage you to look at those boards and commissions and consider applying for those as well. Thank you. All right. And do we have to do anything else on this procedure, or are we done?
Magnificent.
No, we're done, okay. All right, the next item is the open public session. During the open public session, audience members can speak to the council on any issue not scheduled for public hearing. Each speaker should state his or her name for the record and will be given three minutes to address the council. Council staff will track time and inform speakers when they have 30 seconds left to conclude their comments. Start by, you can line up at either podium. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jim Peterson. I live in Southern Valley. I'm here to speak to you about Homes Now, Not Later. I'm formerly homeless and was homeless for 17 years. I'm the co-founder of Homes Now, Not Later. We started in June of 2017. Since then, we've built three tiny homes on Lummi, which has housed five people so far. Since July, we've held monthly homeless summits, feeding over 600 people and providing weather-dependent gear such as sleeping bags, tents, coats, and support services. We organized the sleep-out at City Hall, which lasted for 18 days. In that time, we housed 10 people in permanent housing. Got two people into detox, got one lady to the doctor, and got one person in glasses. We have also built trust with the homeless community. Our goal is to end homelessness in Waukam County by 2020. You say pipe dream, we say no way. Our goal, um, right now, there are 761 homeless people in Waukam County. We say by 2020, we can house every one of them if we put in the work and stop talking about it and just do it. We don't think about it or have a bunch of meetings to talk about it. We just do it because we already know there's a problem. Homes, Homes Now, since June 2017, Homes Now has housed 17 people at no cost to the taxpayers on private donations of $18,000 or $1,058 a person. I'm not here to ask you for money, but I'm here to ask you as county council for your help and support. We are, what we are asking for is a piece of dirt, a small piece of property, to start a pilot project of four tiny homes and a support building. Those tiny homes would have electric and be no bigger than 10 by 10, 100 square feet, and a service building of 12 by 20, which would have a bathroom, kitchen, dining room, and a room for case managers. So what we need from this county council So what we need from this county council is a piece of land we could lease from you. We also need to have a way forward with building codes and zoning issues. With this project, we can house four to eight people and give them a stable place to live for less than it costs the county or the city. The homeless that we met during our summits each have a different reason for being there. They're someone's son, daughter, father, mother, uncle. We are not asking for anything but a way to house the homeless, no hidden agendas, we're all volunteers, none of us get paid. I implore you, please give us a way forward and give us some support. Thank you.
Just, excuse me.
Ms. Brenner.
Could you leave some way to get ahold of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Very nice how to get ahold of us, but I will, I will leave a card.
Well, you keep forgetting.
I will leave a card with...
With Dana. Yeah, right there. Thank you.
Uh, next up? Okay, well then, then please move forward and let's get...
Hey, how's it going? I'm Doug, I'm technical director of Homes Now, co-founder with Jim. According to the Lockton County Coalition to End Homelessness in their 2017 report, there's seven hundred and forty-two people that are homeless in Lockton County. And it's gone up every year since 2012, when it was four hundred and ninety-three people. And twenty-four percent of them are under the age of eighteen, so we're not just talking about adults here, we're talking about about a quarter are under, are minors. The number of homeless students in Washington State has increased by ninety-one percent from 2008 to 2016. This is a crisis, it's happening right now, it's getting worse. Wages are flat, rents are skyrocketing, national leadership to solve this issue is weak. This adds up to the problem we see now, therefore, we need to act locally to solve this issue. We're ready to go, we've proven we can build tiny homes at an affordable price of thirty-eight hundred dollar, thirty-eight hundred dollars per unit with full electric on Lummi, because they let us build. We've proven we can, we can help around fifty people who are homeless self-run and self-manage their own homeless camp for weeks with few issues. Obviously, long-term permanent housing is the end game, but in the short term, while the decision-making process is taking its time to play out, even a tent, even a sleeping bag and a place to take a shit and a shower is better than the wet concrete. These are real people, you know, just like you, this could happen to anybody, this could happen to anyone in your family. And it's a good idea, I think, to get ahead of the problem now, because the next time the, an economic downturn hits, or something stupid happens like that, it's gonna be an even harder problem to solve, and it's probably best to get ahead of it before it turns into fifteen hundred people or two thousand people. We're stepping up as an independent organization because we feel that, we don't think that enough is being done, and we want to see some real results. We want to work with you and the homeless, and to end homelessness in Lockton County and move into the future. We're adaptable, we move fast, we're able to get results. The only thing we have to fear is fear itself, as Sat Paul was saying, so don't be afraid to take a risk and help people get housed. Don't be afraid to get creative, that's what people in the community are craving from their elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you leave your contact?
Yeah.
Is it the same contact?
Yeah. Well, it's, actually, it's a different contact number, but I'm, you know, I'll leave it on.
Would you like to come forward? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Paula Smith, and I'm from Blaine, and I've been involved a bit with...
Can you get closer to the microphone, please?
Really? I have been involved a little bit with Homes Now already, especially to do with the summits at the Maritime Park, where the group provides food for the homeless and, especially at this time of year, the clothing, warmer clothing, and throughout the time, talking to those people and hearing what they're thinking and what their situation is, and also giving things that are little sanitary things, little, anything that they could use, foods that are, you know, contained in a can or something like that, anything like that, we bring and give, give to whoever can use them. Band-aids, I brought one time. I feel the Lockton County Council is the place for me to speak, because I live in Blaine, and I have been coming down to this, what Homes Now has been doing, and have gone out to see the neat little houses that the Lummi, someone at Lummi was willing to let them put those houses on that property. I don't know if you've all been out to see those, but it's a nice little drive to see them. I think, I, the thing is with me is that, I think probably most of you feel the same way, but homelessness is not okay. And I cannot, you know, too much, too many of us don't say right out, come up forward and say, "It's not okay with me, I care about it." And I think this goes along with, in our country and in our world, we're, we're kinda into taking and extracting rather than giving and caring. If we gave and cared more, we'd be all way better off, as you know. And I'm thankful that I think the council is looking through the agenda, and I believe that the county already, I see that you evidently are involved in lots of ways in providing money and contributing to helping with the various needs of this sort.
Thirty seconds, please.
I think the biggest problem, problem is, as Doug was saying, is the, the piece of ground and the laws and the rules in, in being able to do it. And I think we all know that we've seen these little, on TV, these wonderful little setups where there's a few little buildings, and we'd love to see it in our area. So...
Time.
I'm for further work on solving the problem than what we've done already. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward.
Hey, y'all, thank you for having me. I live in Ferndale, my name's John Jolly, and I just started working with Homes Now to help work on an organized encampment. There's, it's a complicated issue, homelessness as a whole, and encampments are definitely not a solution. But a lot of these people's been out here long enough that they can't take moving right into a place after they've been hustled around the woods for months, sometimes years. I believe an encampment's necessary to get people stable and prepared to move on even into a transitional system. And it can be done privately funded without any cost to the local government. All we need is permission. We're not asking for a piece of dirt, we can, we could probably find that. But what we need is permission. If we have permission, people will become more willing to work with us outside of the government. Biggest fear is fear itself. Lack of permission creates a fear. And, you know, with permission, we could get police cooperation, people would be safe, people would have somewhere to, to get three or four days' rest, to get their head clear enough to figure out what they do need to do to move forward. I brought a guy home, he's, he's involved in an, an encamp that we're helping. I brought him home, stayed the night with me Christmas Eve, and he couldn't even stay inside. He had a panic attack, he went outside with his sleeping bag and slept on my porch, Christmas Eve. Because it's just a barrier, and there's, there's numbers of barriers that people are living in tents with right now. We get those people together, get them safe, get them comfortable with us enough to really communicate with us outside of the five or ten or twenty minutes they get with a council or downtown somewhere, you know, a few times, and then in a few weeks, their caseworker changes, you know, and nobody knows, and they get, they get hung out to dry. These people need to be comfortable, and these people need to be safe, and then they can start thinking about moving on with their life, right now.
Thirty seconds, please.
They don't know what they're gonna eat tomorrow, they don't know where they're gonna sleep, they don't know if all their stuff is gonna get picked up and thrown in the trash. We can fix this, little bit at a time, but it starts with cooperation and permission. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, next up? If there's anybody else, by the way, who wishes to speak, please come down in line in front of the podium.
Hi, my name is Simon Grant, I have worked in nonprofit in Lockton County for about five years now, had the pleasure of volunteering with various organizations that serve underserved communities like the homeless population, and not to beat a dead horse, but just to say that a lot of these organizations are at capacity or overcapacity, frequently needing more volunteers, need more funding, needing more support. It's very disheartening to work for these organizations, not only from nine to five, but after those hours and see the problem persist and grow. I don't know the solution, but I know that we need to take action on it. As a private citizen, volunteering is all I can do other than be here and speak to you guys. So just wanted to emphasize that I see this problem grow every day and feel very helpless as to what I can do to help it, and I want to see more action from our government and from our community to address it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hillary Cole, and I live in Bellingham. I was out occasionally down at the Tent City outside of City Hall, and I just want to tell you that the people that are putting together Homes Now, Not Later are fantastic, hard-working people, and the community, the community of homeless people was really neat, but was formed there, why we, why we had the opportunity to be there. Okay, so I'm gonna make this short and sweet. The homeless crisis in Lockton County is an emergency, these are the issues that need to be addressed. One, declare a state of emergency and allow camping with its needed essentials, water, toilets, dumpsters, and fire pits. Two, provide porta-potties, dumpsters around the city and in places people tend to tent. To cut down on the four hundred and fifty, hundred thousand dollars per year cleanup costs. Finish up talks with safe storage and provide storage to the homeless so they can keep their belongings safe while they work, look for work, go to an appointment shop and sleep. Four, resume the laundry vote voucher program, so they, so those without homes can get their belongings clean and they won't have to dispose of them so frequently. Provide a path forward for Homes Now so they can build a tiny homes pilot, pilot project. These are four ten-by-four bedrooms individually built with a service building that has bathrooms for all units, as well as community kitchen and meeting room for outreach workers. These can be identified as a single-family residence as only the main building will have plumbing. The winter weather makes this an even more pressing issue. Homeless people are part of our community, and they matter. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, next up?
My, my name is Joseph Dowd, and it is obvious that I have a speech impediment. My topic tonight is about one of the twenty-nine candidates that applied to be on council that you did not pick. Mr. Blossom, he has often called the kind folks about him a bunch of liberal losers. Examples of when he has made this accusations are, one, almost every Saturday market for the past few years, two, the women's march in, in January of 2017, and three, a march on climate change sponsored by the Red Line, St. Lucie, May of 2017. Mr. Blossom often claims to be a Christian, but I think he has forgotten about the golden rule to treat others the way you would like to be treated. Although I feel a person should repent of their sins, I don't think Jesus Christ is gonna, gonna bring you hell forever. I personally believe in the theory of annihilation, and the first hell go up. In the Bible, in Ecclesiastes nine-five, it states that the dead don't know anything. I think this verse describes the concept of never-lasting burning hell, and blows apart the, the theory of if you, you're good, when you die, you will go straight to heaven. If you go to a church that teaches this disorder view of heaven and hell, you might want to consider defecating, and find any Christian faith that doesn't teach this doctrine, thank you and God bless America while she'll still here.
Thank you, next up?
My name's David Morrison. I still see people that are homeless, these people here are here to help. We need to work together in a, in a open-source type way where everybody works together. They need a place to be. You don't like to have businesses with people falling asleep.
Talk, talk closer to the microphone.
Oh, sorry, and I'm losing my voice, I'm scared to be up here. But these people really help, and I, I would be willing to help out with them. I don't know if you've seen all that took place over here, but lives were changed, people got back with their families, people got jobs, people done things. When there's a community that helps and supports them and works together, things change. If we don't do anything about it, make it a crime, you're just making a reason to have a bigger jail, and that's something you don't want. I don't know if I'm making any sense, but I, this changed my life here. I was a participant at this event, and being there gave me the chance to have a shower and the time to have a, a place to put my stuff so I could go do things in life. And now I have a chance to do better things because of it. I don't know, guys, I'm, I'm talking in circles because I get really nervous up here, and I had all these things to say. But work with Homes Now, they're great people, please.
So first off, you did very well, and I understood everything you said. Thank you. Next up?
Good evening, my name is Josh Bowman, I grew up here in Bellingham. I am homeless right now, I am, a couple weeks ago, I volunteered to be with Homes Now to help them solve this problem. I've noticed in Bellingham, most of my life, there are these vacant places that are abandoned, which will be good to actually put Homes Now. I've been kicked out of probably about twenty other places growing up here since I was a teenager, being homeless. It does work. If they have six camps in Seattle and other cities, states are actually following that routine, I've seen a lot of that online so far, and I'm proud that that is actually going on. I think Bellingham is probably the worst in being homeless, because it keeps sky, sky rising. The homeless community is my family. No defense on my actual family, they've done a good job, as well as the homeless committee who brought me in where I had nowhere to go. We just had a funeral tonight of one of my sisters that passed away at, on the hotel, Mac Hotel, Tina. I think instead of living in these, like, these hotels are getting shut down, stuff like that, would be a good idea to actually open up for emergency for men, women, and children, instead of tearing down a building and rebuilding it. You guys are just costing more money to yourselves than you are to the state. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner?
Have you spoken to the Bellingham City Council? You have?
No, ma'am, this is the first time.
Because when, a lot of you are talking about Bellingham, we can't, we have no authority about what we can and can't do with the land in Bellingham, but, yeah, I agree with you a lot, and I, I just have to put this on the record, I don't know if they've changed it or not, I worked hard on this accessory dwelling unit ordinance to allow little houses in places, and the city of Bellingham, I went to their meeting, they adopted it except in single-family residential areas, which is most of the areas in, in Bellingham. So I know what you're talking about, and I'm hoping that, you're, you're affecting me, I'm on the county council, we got areas...
I wa, I honestly wasn't, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, just...
I'm glad you did.
But I'm actually glad that I am, because I'm probably the only person in here that's actually homeless.
No, I guess not.
Couple other people, and they stand by me. I have, what, eighteen, eight underage kids at Northwest Youth Service standing by me, wanting to go clean up these camps where we can actually be at. But all it is is gonna cost money, and most of these camps, yeah, there are bad things on the ground. If you get like a box cat, rent it for a day, you can pick it up all and just rake it into the bucket. I know some of these camps, I'm actually trying to bring people into Homes Now where we can actually clean something up, just to show the city we're responsible. It's gonna be drug-free, no alcohol, we're asking for dumpsters, toilets, just to sit here and support us, and of course, the council. So we can, hopefully, this year, we can actually start something... So we can, hopefully, this year, we can actually start something sooner and resolve a problem, instead of having a problem keep going. I've been around, I've probably had about 30 people come up to me that are homeless, living in their cars, living in tents, they don't know what to do, because the city is sweeping all their stuff.
Do you have any further questions for the speaker?
Well, just that we've got some of the administration here right now. I'm gonna, I'm interested, but it would have to be outside the city for anything we do. But I'm glad you came and spoke.
Thank you.
Sorry, just three minutes each, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Amy Glasser, welcome to the new council. So the issue is homelessness, not a city issue. You're absolutely right, Barbara. We've been spending a lot of time asking the city council to help us, and they've given us nothing. They've told us the city council attorney has said, oh, that's even better. The city council attorney said that no, only churches can sponsor tent cities, and that has to be on their property, when we understand the law is saying that if they sanction another property, they can, they can control it and take care of it. But our city attorney in Bellingham says no. There's no options for tents within the city limits. That leaves you, 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 and you to make that decision. We have had a few, a tiny little tent camp that got developed after we got evicted off of City Hall that ended up in four different places, and two of them were in the county, on a, on a spot of land in the corner where it is part, it's part of Lower Squalicum Park, so it's part city, part county, part everything. Well, the city was giving us a waiver until the new year to be able to not have to get evicted, so people could be stable for two weeks. But, no. The county showed up, and the county sheriff showed up, and there wasn't anybody from the county to say, no, don't sweep those people. So they got swept, just because they were there, not because they were doing anything wrong, but just because they existed in a tent, and people saw them as they were walking by the path. It is now your responsibility. The city won't do it, and we can't take the back and forth with, it's the city's job, it's the county's job, it's the city's job. It is your job to take care of the people who will die this winter. That woman, Tina, died in a motel because she was fighting to get an apartment, and she didn't get it because she has mental illness, and she didn't get it because she has so many problems, she wasn't stable enough. That's what tiny homes will do. It'll put people into places that they can't manage in group settings. They will not make it in, in community facilities, that the only committee you developed after I fought for a year trying to get on the council was a committee between the county and the city. And what are you all talking about? A 200-bed shelter. You're gonna spend your energy and money putting people in a temporary facility with this housing program. Barbara, ask the people who are on this committee, that is the focus of that committee, is the shelter. It isn't about the immediate need of people dying in the woods, no place for these tents to go, no place for these people to have dignity with a bathroom. You could do that outside of Walmart, that's outside city lines. There are amazingly a million places you could find to provide a tent camp for John Jolly, to provide a tent program for four...
Thirty seconds, please.
Ooh, I'm doing a lot in that. Four homes and a service building. We don't need your money to build it, but we do need hookups, we do need the land, we need your cooperation. And no sapalit, it is not about churches. Church's job is not to take care of the people. It is your job. It is your job to take care of the people who can't take care of themselves. The churches aren't doing it. If they were doing it, we wouldn't be here. We're doing this because they're not stepping up. If they don't, it's you. That's all we have, is you.
Time.
We can't do it without you.
Amy?
I just want to say for the record, she misrepresented what I said completely, and I don't appreciate it. Doesn't help your issue when you misrepresent what I said.
What did I say?
You know, you've got to say your...
No, 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 you just confronted me. What did I say? That was wrong.
Sorry, sorry.
You said, "All we do is..."
Oh, that was a "we," not your personal.
We're not gonna go...
Well, it felt personal.
You attacked someone in the audience, and you don't allow anything back? Don't attack me then.
Okay. Then don't attack other people.
I'm telling you what you're doing, and what I'm asking for is my three minutes.
No, you're not telling me what I'm doing.
I get my three minutes, Barbara.
You did get it. You did get it.
So don't yell at me for it.
Mr. Bird?
Amy?
Yes, sir.
You got an extra second?
Yes.
Great. I had two questions, actually, maybe you could help me answer. One is several people that came up before you mentioned a service building. Would that be a movable service building?
All the buildings would be movable, so that it could be on temporary place for as long as we get the building. So if it's a place you want to expand, a road, we'll take the area for a year or until you start expanding it. Everything will be on wheels.
Okay. And my other question was, one of the people that came, person that came up, they said that land was the big problem, right? You needed a spot. But they also kind of insinuated that there might be other regulations that were preventing it. Do you know what those might be?
The building codes, when it comes to how big a bathroom can be, how far a toilet can be from the shower, how far, how many units can be on a property that unrelated, if it is a single-family property. So building codes and land use are biggest, are the biggest issues.
So is that directly related to the service building, then?
Generally so, because the others are just, they can be, I believe, under 200 square feet, or sheds, and as long as they don't have plumbing, they can be backyard sheds, and they don't have a problem. It's the plumbing building that creates the issue with housing and land use.
Okay. And last question. Was there a piece of property that your organization had in mind that you think would work?
At this moment, no. That's why we want a declaration of emergency, because we haven't been able to come up with anything. However, that doesn't mean there isn't anything available. Mr. Buchanan has been working with us, and we're trying to be able to find something, either private or public. But if we can't find private, then we're at your mercy. And I don't mean to get upset, it's just we have spent a year trying to do this, and it's been very frustrating, because someone just died.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up, please.
Were you speaking to me?
Yes, it's your turn.
Irene Morgan. I live in the county. It's very refreshing, it's very saddening, but it's very refreshing to hear me, to hear all of this testimony to this evening. As you know, I poked around the community for 30 years or more, and in 2008 and '09, a group of us, Bellingham, Bellingham's Friends of the Homeless, tried to do something very similar. I quit going out for the point-in-time count when the criteria was changed. I believe I heard something about 700 and some people, or 900 and some people now being, being homeless. The last time I was involved in the point-in-time count was about five years ago, and it was 1,300 then. They have changed the criteria to follow the federal, federal regulations. They no longer count people who are couch surfing.
Who are what?
Couch surfing. Who, who live, who live in somebody's home, only temporarily, and they sleep on their couch, or they sleep on the floor. These people are still homeless, so why are we not counting them? This really upsets me, and the, we make laws, so the, the criteria for the building that you just asked about can be changed. So let's see how we can change things, so that we can go forward and help these folks. There are so many sad stories about people that have lost their lives who are homeless. I'm an emotional person, and it affects me every time I hear about it, and it's not okay. And I know we can do better than this, and we, for, these are the least of us, and if we don't take care of them, who's gonna take care of us when it's us? This is just not okay. And I know we can do this, it's very, very simple. You are not the ones I presented it to, but Kelly in Linville, our mayor of Bellingham, has a whole plan that the University of Washington and their students did, oh, about five years ago. I distributed it, and it's doable. There are places all over this town, there are vacant buildings all over this town in this county, where we should be housing people that don't have houses and homes. These folks mostly are mentally ill, most, or many of them have jobs. How do you get up and go to work when you haven't had a good night's sleep in a nice warm home with a bathroom to go to, to go to, to take a shower?
Thirty seconds, please.
And clean your clothes in a washer and dryer. How do you do that? I wouldn't even have a clue as how to start. I'm sure none of you would either. So let's see how we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
My name is Joy Gilfillan. I'm president of the Restorative Community Coalition, and I was pleased, last week, the Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force did a really intense session, and came out with some really good things that they will be working on in the next 18 months, to help us with the incarceration issue. I want to tie incarceration, homelessness, addiction, and trauma together. When you study deeply into the issues that we're dealing with, economics is the bottom line, and the addiction to, or the economic addiction to abuse, poverty, and generational trauma is all interconnected. We have one of the rarest opportunities that I've seen in a long time in Watcom County for the first time in history, that we could conceivably pull together the tribes, the county, the cities, the issues that we're dealing with, with incarceration and homelessness. There are many of the people that run from being homeless to being incarcerated, to being back on the streets, to dealing with trauma, to dealing with adverse childhood experiences that feed the entire cycle, and we are right now in a huge economic crisis. What if Watcom County could come together and hold a summit, a restorative economic summit, and actually look at, how do we deal with the real-world problems? We're looking at Third World problems in America today. Watcom County could be the leading county to create change. We have solutions. Our coalition has been working on them for a while, and what we want to talk about is how to do trauma interception work. How do we actually do recovery work in, in camps, in homeless facilities? We do also have people from our coalition who would be willing to help build some of these tiny homes. We could do camps. We could do workforce development. What we need is will, and the willingness to sit back and say, you know what, all the political haranguing isn't serving us. Let's sit down at the table and say, how do we solve it? We could duplicate and create a model that we could duplicate across the nation, and we could create change that is really crucially necessary right now. I personally am not looking forward to having children and grandchildren growing up in a Third World country where we're dealing with LA problems, where we're dealing with mass, mass incarceration...
Thirty seconds, please.
And immigration issues. We can fix it. We have the capacity, and I trust that we could do it here, and I would give everything I've got to be able to help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up?
Heichka siam, siam nis jala chasiam, quants denat sinas na. Thank you, honorable council members of Watcom County. I am Candace Wilson from Lemmy Nation. I just want to thank you and applaud you for your selection and your appointment of an admirable member of this community. His qualifications by far exceed those of what you may be aware of, not only at the local and state, but the national level of policy and governance of this great nation. I appreciate your time and consideration of all the candidates this evening, as we have heard, they are well-received, very educated, and very dedicated in our community. As we are in this together, we are not just one and separate, although we may be different. It is the diversity that brings us together in our community that makes us thrive. It is what we do here for our people that will make the difference, because we all know and are aware that the difference makes the difference. I just want to take this time to say thank you once again. Heichka siam, siam nis jala chasiam. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Mark Pearson, I live in Bellingham. Only person I know up there is red. I hadn't, it's the first time to be in these chambers, it's not a good comment for me, living here since 1980, but I just want to share one, one idea with you. When I listen to these really difficult and complex problems that you're faced with, that we're all faced with, but you're kind of in the hot seat. I had the privilege of being the executive for five years over Robert Wood Johnson Foundation's Pursuing Perfection grant, which was meant to redesign American health care, went on in this county. And a lot of interesting things happened, but by far the most interesting thing was that because Mary Manetti insisted, we had patients on all the design teams, which scared the hell out of every single one of us professionals. We couldn't imagine that they wouldn't blame us for what a wreck the system was, but that never actually happened. And their solutions were infinitely more affordable and infinitely more practical than anything me or my friends came up with. And during those years, an expression came, I don't know whether it came from this county or one of the other participants, but, and it was nothing about me without me. It's quick, it's easy to remember, but I gotta tell you, it's the single most powerful idea that came out of those years. You can't believe it, you know, if you're an expert, and God knows I'm an expert. You just can't believe that normal people have much better ideas to solve their own problems than we do. So if you do, and I hope you do, take on these problems that have been addressed with passion and intelligence here, you always involve the client, or whatever you want to call them, the patient at Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. They say the person previously known of as patient, because they won't call people patients there anymore, because it is, in fact, dismissive. They're just people, and there are people that have a huge part of the solution in their hands. So just, that's the only thing I'm offering, is when you do take these things on, just the last thing, just go, why don't we just put some, whomever, poor people, homeless people, in the group? And it's, it's not a random process. You don't just grab them off the street. The people in the group, who know what the group has to do, has to pick them. Otherwise, it turns to chaos, okay? And feel free to call me, I'd be happy to...
Thirty seconds, please.
Give you free advice.
Yes.
Okay, you gotta leave your number with Dana.
Anybody else wish to speak in open, public session? Seeing none, we'll close the open, public session and move on to, sorry, sure, Mr. Bird?
I have one comment. I just want to say I very much appreciated the amount of passion that everyone had coming up here. I know that this is an incredibly important topic, and it's something that I think that we can work on, and I'd like to find a way to do that. But thank you for, for bringing that passion. It can be a little fiery, but you know, that's what happens when we have passion about topics, and that doesn't hurt anyone. On a second note, before, after I was elected, but before I took office, I was given the courtesy to actually set up here and participate in conversation, even though I couldn't vote. And I'd like to ask that Tim be given that same courtesy and be invited up to, to take a seat and participate in any conversation for the rest, the remainder of this meeting, even if he doesn't have that opportunity just yet to vote. I think that it would be beneficial for him to have that opportunity.
So you're making that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
I second that.
What was the motion, sorry?
The motion is to allow Mr. Ballou to sit as an observer at the council seat tonight.
Sure.
So have a motion and a second?
I'm smiling.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Mr. Ballou, please take your seat.
Yeah.
Yeah, give him an agenda, the big one.
And now you're gonna answer all the questions. Okay. Some of them want us to hold it. Yeah.
Yes.
That's pretty good that we do have that, but, yeah, makes it...
Now, I would just like to briefly say that on my second council meeting, which was the meeting after the organization meeting, my council packet was 996 pages, and I hope the clerk will make the same accommodation for Mr. Bird and Mr. Ballou.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, so next item up is to request authorization with the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County and the Pacific Northwest Guardian Ad Lightum LLC for the provision of guardian ad lightum services for youth subject to dependencies in Watcom County Superior Court in the amount of $95.23 per case, not to exceed $80,000. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Mr. Buchanan... All right, so next item up is to request authorization with the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County and the Pacific Northwest Guardian Ad Lightum LLC for the provision of guardian ad lightum services for youth subject to dependencies in Watcom County Superior Court in the amount of $95.23 per case, not to exceed $80,000. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Mr. Buchanan, is it purrable? Any, sorry, second?
Second.
Mr. Donovan seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Brennan?
Yeah, is there somebody here from the administration on this? Or maybe, oh.
Hi there.
I think you already know what I might be going to ask. It said, this is going to be like ending this thing, so does that mean CASA is going to, are we building up CASA?
Yes, it's continuing to build, and this is the phase-out contract for the remaining youth dependency actions who've been served by Pacific GAL. We're down to about 60 cases being served, and by the end of the year, they should be all transferred over in-house.
And how many are CASA-serving?
We have, in-house, we have about 300 cases in-house, and CASA is making up about 140 of those right now through remainder of staff guardian ad lightum. So have another training coming up in March to increase the CASA's capacity.
And does that have a little to do with the fact that we're kind of, it sounds like we're phasing this out?
We're building up in the CASA in-house program and phasing this out.
Perfect.
So this is the last contract.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
David Reynolds.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero, sorry, six zero. Next item up is request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County and Washington State University to continue the shared agent costs for the Washington State University Watcom County extension for 2018 in the amount of $196,540 for a total amended contract amount of $1,783,325.90. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Ms. Brennan moves approval, a second?
Second.
Mr. Buchanan seconds. Any discussion? Ms. Brennan?
Can, I'm going to support this, but Tyler, or Jack, or some, can we get a presentation from the WSUP? Usually they come and do that anyway, but we haven't had one in a while. He said yes. I know, you can't, you can't see his head bobbing up.
Mr. Lous says yes. Got it in the record. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. Next item up is request authorize, sorry, before I do this, is there any staff report on the next item? No, okay. Next item up is to request authorization with the county executive to enter into a contract amendment between Watcom County and the Opportunity Council to fund one full-time professional in the Opportunity Council's homeless outreach team, adding a dope, sorry, opiate substance abuse, substance use disorder O slash S U D services to contact and act as a care coordinator for individuals who are ready to engage in treatment and to provide support services to people with opiate and substance use disorders who require a lengthier engagement process in the amount of $112,227 for a total amended amount, contract amount of $163,227. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Ms. Brennan moves approval. Mr. Donovan seconds. Any discussion?
Just.
Ms. Brennan?
I'm taking, I don't know if I'm supposed to ask Tyler, maybe Tyler, you could come down here or something, because I just, this sounds great. We should have more providers that offer this whole opportunity under, oh, okay, you could come down, under the, under one person, and when you hire that person, would it be possible to have that person come and talk to us about what they plan to do in the next year?
Certainly.
I love this idea.
Good evening, Perry Mallory, I'm Human Services Supervisor with the Watcom County Health Department. That individual's actually been hired-
Oh, okay.
...and pretty thrilled with the individual experience and et cetera, and so would be more than happy to, you know, provide some information and just some, some experience.
We, I'd love a presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's amazing.
Any further discussion? Mr. Ballou, feel free to ask questions if you wish.
Oh, no, it's, I just want to, I do clarify just for the record, I did not get the chance to fully go through the materials for the meeting, but both this item and as well as the contract up before, just presented by Mr. Reynolds, I don't know if he's still here, definitely two of the, in past experiences, two of the most challenging issues for a government to tackle, these services of homelessness, as well as getting children reunited with their families, and just very grateful for the staff who takes these issues on.
Thank you.
I'm excited about this one.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. Next item up is to request authorization with the county executive to enter into a contract between Watcom County and Compass Health to fund a community outreach and recovery support cause team to provide support to the individuals who experience mental illness that dramatically limits their ability to acquire and/or retain stable housing and access basic resources for daily living in the amount of $41,585. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Ms. Brennan moves approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Buchanan seconds. Any discussion?
Just sounds wonderful.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six to zero. Next item up is request authorization with the county executive to enter into a inter-local agreement between Watcom County and Island County to provide funding for the Island County Health Department to support their participation in planning and implementing regional youth marijuana prevention strategies and activities in the amount of $18,330. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Sedu moves approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donovan second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr., sorry, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I'm just curious, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with this, so why are we funding a program for Island County out of Watcom County dollars?
I asked that before.
We're not exactly.
Perry Mallory, a great question. This is actually the last of six interlocal agreements. We were found with the local health jurisdictions in North Sound County to be the individual, to be the lead for this contract with Department of Health. And so we now basically are developing a process with the other counties, and the funds at this point is really for the planning process of each of the four other counties within the contract. So we're actually receiving, we've received funds from Department of Health through the I-502 taxation on marijuana, and then I'm using it to respond to plan and respond to any abuse in terms of substances, marijuana specifically with youth and other susceptible individuals to that. So this just happens to be the last one of a total of six that we did.
So 100% of the funds that we're passing or giving, we have received from that 502 tax?
It's accurate.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we're, it's regi, it's regional. It was set up as a region.
Just because it's not Watcom County tax dollars that would have been committed to Watcom County, being sent to Island County.
That's correct.
We're the administrator for that.
That's accurate.
Further discussion?
But I was just going to say, we get more money for us to spend on good programs that way, by being-
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I guess.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. Next item up is approval of special standing council meeting dates for 2012, sorry, 2012, 2018.
Second.
Mr. Buchanan moves approval. Mr. Bird seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six to zero. The next item up is council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees, and I think there was someone who was going to propose on.
Yes. I was thinking about it, and I had a discussion with a couple of other people as well, that we had such a tremendous response that 28 people put their names in to serve on the county council, and we have so many boards and so many vacancies, and like I said before, there are many, many ways that people can put their time in to help run this whole government. It's not only these seven people do that, but there are hundreds and hundreds of other people who serve on different boards and committees and things, and my suggestion was that if we allow a couple of weeks for people to rethink, of course, out of 28 people, we could take only one. I mean, you know, no matter how you cut it. So my suggestion is, or motion is, that let's wait a couple of weeks before we appoint anybody to any committee and let other people review and allow them to send in applications, even if the date of application has passed, so that we may get more candidates and more diverse people to serve on different boards and different committees. So my suggestion, not suggestion, my motion is that let's postpone this for two more weeks at least, so that, and allow people to make more applications before we appoint anybody.
Second.
That's a motion, a second, Ms. Brennan, or Mr. Bird?
I just want to make sure I understand, so you're talking about all of these?
All of these.
Postponing all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's nothing so urgent that has to be done this week, right?
You're talking about our council appointments, not what-
Council appointments, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Mr. Bird?
I'm just curious, there's a number of these that I think have multiple vacancies, but only one or two people that are interested, so can we appoint those tonight? Because there'll still be vacancies on the seat that we're going to be trying to fill. And then my other one is, and I like the idea of allowing more people to apply, but I also feel like the incarceration prevention and reduction task force is a fairly important one that I would like to see kind of get seated so they can continue their work, and would it be possible for us to make appointments for that one specifically as well, just so that we can make sure we're not interrupting anything that's going on with that task force?
I like that.
Mr. Buchanan?
I, I'm not really opposed to that, but what I'm saying is, is if we leave the, two weeks are not going to, it's not a mission critical appointments that something is so critical that has to be done today. Maybe, I think we should just let people think through, maybe they may want, maybe wanting to be on this committee and not on this committee, and let them have that opportunity to be able to do that. People who have applied, their applications are good, they will be honored.
Mr. Buchanan?
That's my suggestion, but I invite discussion.
Mr. Buchanan, Ms. Brennan?
Yes, I support moving all these, putting them out two weeks, because we have a new council member that can't vote tonight on any of these appointments, and I would love to get his perspective on these appointments as well. So I think it would behoove us to wait for two more weeks. I agree with what Mr. Sedu said, there's, it's, none of these boards or commissions are going to crash and burn in two weeks if we don't appoint tonight.
Ms. Brennan?
Well, I just have a question for I don't know who, on the incarceration prevention and reduction task force, aren't some of these vacant and there are applicants for vacant positions? And Tyler's nodding yes, so could that cause problems? I don't know. That's a really important one.
Yeah, and response, it's kind of related to that, there, we've also just received some applications-
For that?
...or we at least got those additional ones that I didn't really get a chance to look at.
We have, what's it, currently have nine additional, so seven additional applicants for the different boards and commissions.
But I know for, allow Jill, I guess, the, right, our packet says there's no applicant for the EMS person for the task force-
Now there is.
...but we did get somebody-
We did, yeah, Jerry DeBruin.
Got some emails about that.
So some of these are vacant now. They're not-
Some of we just-
Oh, never mind, I'm fine then, they're not vacant.
The expiration date for terms is the end of this month.
Okay.
My concern with taking this out two weeks is, excuse me, if we could get, if we moved the deadline till 10:00 AM next Tuesday, we can get information in the packet. If we go all the way until the next meeting, you're going to end up in the same situation where you have a stack of applications you get that day, and you're probably going to have a busy day, you won't have a chance to look at them. But those, those positions will be, many of those positions will be expiring.
And with the planning commission?
The planning commission also, the 31st of January would be the end of the terms-
Right.
For current members.
Perhaps I could offer a friendly amendment that we do what Mr. Sedu's saying, but the applications have to be in by January 23rd by 10:00 AM, which would get you in the council packet, correct?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add that we've had councils receive emails from several of the boards and commissions asking for this delay, because I think they're all a little excited at the idea of drawing on the talent of all the applicants we've had for the council members, not to, not to say that those who have applied are not well-qualified, but I think everybody likes to have the maximum choice possible. All right, so we have, any further discussion? So all in favor of Mr. Sedu's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Was, were you clear on the motion? I should have reread it. Yep, so, okay.
I'm going to keep this.
All right, next item up is executive appointments to boards and commissions and committees. County Executive Jack Lous reappoints Susan Gibbon, sorry, Gribbin for a second term to the Watcom County Housing Authority Board, a commissioners concurrent with the City of Bellingham mayor's, reappointment of Ms. Gibbon to the Belling Housing, Bellingham Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to confirm.
Move to approve, move to consent.
Move to confirm, yes.
Correct language is?
I don't think you're really confirming the appointment, you're, he's, I believe the county executive needs to alert you to the fact that they've, with the City of Bellingham, they've both appointed this person. I don't think you actually are confirming the appointment.
We're not.
But you've asked, you've asked to make a motion.
He's reappointing her.
I mean, I'm not sure what it says in the packet, but I did talk to his office about that last week. It's not necessarily confirming, but go ahead and use that term, it's no harm.
That's what we usually call it. I think, and it's reappointing, he says, it says County Executive Jack Lous reappoints Susan-
Save us.
Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive, so yes, the county executive and the mayor of Bellingham, Kelly Linville, have both reappointed Ms. Gibbons onto this committee. This is for information only, but it would be very nice if the council would just confirm that appointment to show that some-
Will be nice.
To the clerk's attention, you have asked us to make a motion. So that's right. So do I have a motion to move to confirm?
I move to confirm.
Ms. Brennan moves to confirm, this is a second.
Nice, yeah.
Donovan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
I have one question about the appointments to the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. Are we going to apply that same 23rd deadline to those appointments as well?
That was my understanding, but as it's a different vote, I think we probably should take the vote, so-
Great, thank you.
Mr. Sedu, do you want to make the same motion under the flood control?
I would like to make the same motion.
There's still space for more applicants.
Yeah, plus, they even, they, somebody from their email does and asked us to postpone it.
Mr. Sedu's move that motion, Mr. Buchanan has seconded it?
I second.
I beat you.
Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Okay.
So the next item up is to introduce items one through six with the blue, the packet, this one here, being a replacement for item six. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I'll move to reintroduce.
Ms. Brennan moves to introduce, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Next item up is Special Committee of the Whole, right, I think the only item was the reorganization discussion.
I'm sorry, what?
The only item, Ms. and Madam Clerk under that was the reorganization discussion tonight, correct?
I'm sorry, I missed that, I was looking at something.
We're on committee reports, page eight of your packet, and it looks like you're asking for a, recommending a Special Committee of the Whole report.
Yes, and hopefully a decision, what did we decide on that, actually, now that I think about it? For the criminal justice-
Ah, sorry. Does someone else want to speak to that? I think Mr. Buchanan, that was your, maybe the criminal justice-
Say again?
The criminal justice-
Just an announcement of the-
Oh, yeah, we announced that the schedule for our committee meetings, we would alternate between the Public Works and Public Health Committee, and the Criminal Justice and the, and Public Safety Committee would meet on- and Public Safety Committee would meet on alternate council days.
Right.
We'd try that for a while, see how it works.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? I think the other thing that, to bring to tension for the general public is we did decide on the committee's assignments. Um, the incoming, we left a couple of committees that are vacant, and part of your packet, Mr. Blue.
New guy gets them all.
New guy gets them all.
The person not in the room is the point is.
Well, the new guy was out of the room at the time.
Yeah.
The practice lives on.
You'll love him.
Anyway, so we, we can go over that afterwards, but the committee assignments have been decided. Uh, are there any other items for the council?
No.
Any council member updates? Mr. Buchanan?
No.
Mr. Bird?
No.
Ms. Brenner?
I'm sure there's something, Bud, for you. I don't know.
Updates, uh, Councilmember Buchanan and I had a really good, productive meeting with the task force. It was called a retreat, but it was three hours' plan. Looking forward to working on that.
Oh, I have a question. Before, can I just, can we get a little bit of an update on what's going on with the city and the county committee that was formed? Barry, you're on it, I don't know who else is on it.
Mr. Brown?
About homeless housing. I haven't heard anything. You said you've had a couple of meetings. What's going on?
So the city has, and the, the discussion that, that came forward in public comment was correct. The city has prioritized, when they asked us to form this committee, prioritize finding a site that we would be able to do a two-hundred-bed shelter.
So...
So they have proposed a number of sites. We're, we're going through the criteria and ranking those sites, and we have not come to any conclusions. And that, Thursday afternoon at three o'clock over in the garden, or no, this one's upstairs in five fourteen, we will be, uh, ranking those sites and doing a pro and con discussion of all of them.
Well, can, can you open it up to a full, more full discussion, like what they were talking about, tiny houses? Has anybody?
Um, I'm trying to do that.
What's the holdup?
The, the City of Bellingham really wants to get through the, this, this ranking of these sites that they have proposed.
Well, but it...
And that should be done soon, very, very soon.
Okay, and I'm fine with site. Site, that's land. What if we could do the tiny houses there instead of a...
Well, that's, that's another thing we need to talk about. And that, that's why I'm saying, trying to steer that conversation to a broader context on homelessness, other than just focusing on shelters.
Okay.
We do, we need, we need more than one silver bullet to solve this broad problem.
That was, Mr. Donovan.
I think tiny houses would be way better.
But I think, I was trying to say this, well, on the side earlier, we could have some of this, in terms of what the scope of the county might be able to do, either at a committee meeting at Public Works and Health, or we should, or Criminal Justice and Public Safety, but one of those, talking to PDS about some, you know, what are the code issues, what are, are there any options about zoning, leasing land?
I'd like it in Public Works and Health.
And I think that's something.
Who's on it with me?
I am.
Oh, the new guy is.
And I am.
And Barry. Oh, this would be good.
The new guy.
Tyler, you're the old guy. You've been here a week.
The new guy now.
Yeah, which new guy are you talking about?
I know. Oh, wow.
Yeah, you've got about ninety minutes of seniority.
I know.
That's right. Okay, yeah, I'd like to have it in Public Works.
Did you?
Sorry.
Okay, it's my turn. I just want to say that congratulations to Mr. Blue. And the second part is, yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and the City of Bellingham, uh, organized that celebration at Mount Baker Theater, and it was quite large attendance, and Culson Choir was there to, uh, to, um, do some choir work. I was invited as one of the speakers, and that was in regards to the Arch of Healing and Reconciliation. I think we need to talk more about it. The project is moving forward, and on April twenty-first, we plan to install that arch of healing and reconciliation. So it was a well-attended and a successful event.
Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I, I did have a couple of things. One, I attended that, and I listened to your speech. You gave an impressive speech, and you got a standing ovation, and well-deserved. Congratulations. Ms. Brenner, you also won an award last Friday from the Realtors, which I thought was also very well deserved.
I was there too, yes.
Congratulations on that as well. And then, totally different topic, but Tyler, I'm curious, I got an email today from a gentleman who's having problems with his, with some flooding.
We got a, we got a response.
Was that resolved?
Yeah, we got a response from Jack's, from the...
Okay, so that's, that's taken care of for him?
Yeah.
Better be.
Yeah, Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive. I'm not actually familiar with that specific one. I haven't seen that in my email box.
Oh.
But yes, I do think there was, I've heard that there was a response.
Yeah, they're gonna have it done by tomorrow.
In the future, if council members do get some contacts about some administrative questions with Public Works or Planning and Development Services, if there's a C.C. on either Jack or myself or one of the department heads, do know that we'll probably follow up and then work with us or one of the department heads, and we'll be able to get an answer to the constituent.
Do you know why there, there was kind of, it sounded like, well, you said you...
Again, yeah, I don't know this specific, I don't know this specific one. I can look into it.
Well, I'm just curious if there's any kind of follow-up, because he said his case was closed before there was any resolve, and it left his house flooded. And so is there any way that, do we go back and look at that situation and say, how do we make sure this doesn't happen to someone else?
Let's take a look at the specifics after the meeting, and then we can follow up with you.
Yeah, they got, they're staying in a motel, 'cause they can't even live in the house.
I, I think if, if it's the same person, uh, I, I had a long discussion with him as well, and I directed him to make that email and, and directed him with John Hudgens, because he could respond a lot faster than come to council and we'll discuss this and everything. I said that we will bring it up. If it, you don't get a satisfactory answer, call back. Otherwise, that's the process. So I asked him to approach the council as well as John.
And if it's, if it's impact from being displaced because of flooding, Watkin County, or the, the entity may not actually work through with that property owner.
Yeah.
But we would have resources through Red Cross and through others to be able to connect the dots for them to accomplish it.
Exactly.
So we can talk more about the specifics, and I'll make sure a response gets to the constituent.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
I just wanted to follow up on what Councilmember Sedu was talking about with Martin Luther King Day. I accidentally, you know, I was channel surfing late, and I saw this incredible movie, and I'm sure it's around and anybody can find it if you're techie at all, which I'm not. It's called Selma, and, oh my God, it was so realistic. I mean, it was amazing. It just brought me right back to when that happened, 'cause I'm the oldie here, and it did bring me back. And at the end, they actually showed real, you know, the real movie of, of the people marching, and it was beautiful. I mean, I don't think people appreciated Martin Luther King as, even today, I think there are people who misinterpret him. He, he was about people getting along with each other, working with each other, and not becoming so polarized, like everything's become. And if you say one thing that someone doesn't like, you're a bigot or racist or some, instead, he was looking for love, and he was amazing. I don't thi, they don't make people like that too much, so.
Oh, they do.
What?
I said they do.
What'd you say?
I said they do make people, they keep coming up, you know, if you look at last thousand years.
Well, it's very rare.
Yes, very rare, very rare.
Very rare to have anything.
Yeah.
And I don't think a lot of people really understood what he actually stood for, and it was just beautiful, so.
I think you can find the film without being a techie.
Well, I don't know if I could.
You did?
No, but that was by accident. But it was beautiful, yeah.
All right. Any further business or updates or comments from council members?
Is there any?
Seeing none, we are adjourned.